And Kevin took it on himself, not on himself, this is his job. But they went and worked out a system where the people, where they could still use the 20, but they moved it around so that the people could use the property and everything. And we know that didn't happen in the past, the way it was, it was always. And we had two pieces of property. One of them was there, one of them was at 5500, 5500, 195th Terrace. And it's just nice to see there. When you go there and you see now those people are working with our people, trying to make them to use their property the best they can and going out of their way to help them. Also, it actually didn't come up today, but I know some of you all seen your emails where Kevin has been working real hard to get our MOA permit. And he, I talked to him about it today. He's almost pretty sure it's slam dunk. It's gonna go before the board meeting as a non-consent, it's consent item. So he's worked it out where, and I tell you, really where it really showed up to me was we're working at the Fishing Hole Park right now. And December's here, right? Yeah. And December and I have always had a discussion on the trail. The south end of the trail, she says, is always wet. Well, when I go out there, it's dry. But then Willie and I was out there the other day and we, actually, I found a ditch that they found out there. I found it the hard way, I got stuck in it. But we walked this ditch and at the end of the ditch, there's about a, I'd say it was a good 10-inch pipe where it went strictly into the 12, you know? So anytime it rained, the water went into the 12. Turn it around, every time the 12 came up, the water went into Fishing Hole Park. So December's right, during, before the MOA, the trail was probably wet all the time, but now it's dry fortunately most of the time. But it's still, it's still wet, December, right? Still getting stuck. But no, but that's, I know Steve's real interested in that, and almost all of us are, and we really have a fact. Going to the Fishing Hole Park, like Kathy said, they had, the trail riders had a real good group out there Sunday, and they had a bigger piece of equipment than I had luckily because some of the poles I couldn't pull, he pulled and got them out of there for us. But we pulled quite a few poles. We still got a few more to go, but they worked real hard of cutting some of the bushes back on the trails and they, fortunately, they cut the parking lot for us. And I think we got a new person that's gonna help us keep that parking lot cut so we can do that. But, and also Willie's here tonight, and I don't know, he don't get a chance to tell you, so I'll tell you for him, they had their, where they, the people went out there for the bid, to look at the bid, and the bids went in the process right now to get started on the work. And so very shortly, I think we'll be seeing some dirt moved out there very soon. On the bulk pickup, I don't know. I'd say, I say, my pickup is Tuesday, but it's usually not till Wednesday. I don't know. I think we had that problem a little bit before. It may be worse now. I think, Peter. Peter, is Lonnie the one, the contact that you work with, Lonnie Bergeron?
For SWS Bulk?
For Bulk.
No, the contact is Tony Bedala, and his supervisor that rolls the streets every day is Alex. I can't pronounce his last name.
Yeah, well, who would Bergeron oversees it?
Bergeron doesn't oversee this. Bergeron is the disposal contract that will come up, come to play in July. SWS is the hall.
Bergeron's people don't have any say-so, don't they have?
No, they do not, sir.
No? Okay. But I know it's a problem. I don't know really. Bob, like you say, I feel this way, if they, I'm glad they got there on Wednesday, they didn't get there Tuesday, but they got there on Wednesday. Maybe we need to talk to them and see why, you know, that's happening. But it's, it's a problem, but let me tell you something. I don't know if you was here before we had the bulk pickup. I don't wanna go back to the 40/50 rule at all, you know, so we really need to work it out. On 164 Terrace, she left, our commander left.
Oh, he's here.
Oh, yeah, I know that, but I was looking for the young lady back there. I think your answer is if we can get that officer on that street and write some tickets. We know who they are. They're Davie people, 'cause I've seen a lot of them. I'm on 166 and I follow them and I see them, they come flying down 166, they turn and they go right into that project. And they're coming down 164, they don't go 163 for the speed bump. I live on 162, and I don't want the speed bumps, I tell you. We need to find out. But I know if they get enough tickets on the, I think that's gonna be our answer. I don't know any other answer. And unfortunately, some of them, like you say, is our own people, but whatever it takes, I agree with you, we gotta slow it down. I don't know what the answer is. Maybe if we could get her to-
There she is.
...have certain days. I'm talking about 164 Terrace. You know, my, my suggestion would-
Get radar out there.
Have somebody out there writing tickets. I know tickets will make a difference, you know? I know that for a fact, and that's what, I know what the gentleman's talking about 'cause I live on 166 and I got the same problem.
We've been out there twice already since I've come to the district. We've done enforcement there on two separate occasions, strict enforcement, and we rotate it from 164 to 166. It is a temporary measure. We were trying to assist them in supporting their endeavors to, I know that the county does not like to use stop signs for speed calming devices, however, they are school bus stops as well. So in our address to the county, if you will, we would like to mention to them that the, we feel that not only will it benefit the residents to have the additional stop signs, it will help the speed on those streets. However, it will also ensure the safety of the children that are standing out there at the bus stops. We are actively writing citations out there. It is one of those things, you know, one of the stories that I tell repeatedly. We're in a school zone, we'll hit it, we'll hit it, we'll hit it. The minute we're not there, the speed comes back up, we go back out. It's not a long-term and permanent solution, which is what we were looking for in assisting them and supporting them with our own studies by going out there with the stop signs.
If I could jump in with you, Freddie, one second here. Have we inquired with the residents, 'cause we have one here now, the time of day that it may be worse or better?
Yes.
We have?
It's, actually, it was worse when school was in session and the traffic was increased there. It is during the morning rush hour and the evening rush hour.
Yes.
And that is when we are conducting our traffic enforcement right now. And we alternate streets. However, we are limited in our resources as far as setting them out there for long periods of time. As you know, we do have the staffing out here, so we can't leave them out there for indefinite periods of time. We do send the traffic unit out there, and like I said, we do alternate the streets. So they are getting enforcement, and then on the opposite street, we're putting the signs out there as another speed control measure. It is a temporary solution, we're looking for a long-term solution.
'Cause what a people don't realize, I don't know if we've ever looked at it, but I would just estimate, we probably got more people living in our town that don't belong in our town. You know, Davie, Davie population over there, you know, some of that project is six units to an acre and stuff. But if you look at the population, it may be we got more cars, this Davie people and Pembroke fines people that we have in our own town. But, and I know, I live on 166 and I follow them a lot, and you'll see them, they come flying down 166, they turn on Sterling, they go right to that entrance, and they're right into that entrance.
I was out there the other morning, I will say that, both of the people that we pulled over unfortunately were Southwest Ranches.
Whatever you can do to help with-
We did give them warnings.
Next time it's a ticket there, right?
Next time it's a ticket.
Whatever you can do, I know we'll appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. My last thing is something that, this thing come up to me, I'm not gonna tell you why because it's good cause and problems with somebody, but I usually take a vacation, I haven't taken one the last couple of years, and I go, I have a friend who lives in South Carolina. And one of the things I look forward to every time is, we go there, I'm usually there for the whole weekend and maybe two days. We go outside, either Friday night and Saturday night, and go listen to bluegrass music. I don't see that, it's something I would like see started in our town. You know, we probably got some people here that actually do play it and stuff and that. But especially if Astro and Mary Gay ever get the park finished over there, we'd have a place you could go and listen to it, listen to them over there. But no, I really think, I think it would fit in our town really nice if we, and I know for a fact, I was told, this one people, I don't wanna mention names, I'm gonna find out if they are, but I'd like to see it, if we can work something up on it, because, do it. That's all I got. Thank you.
That'd be great, that'd be fun, Freddie.
Doug?
Yes, sir. I'm gonna be a couple of minutes here 'cause I gotta explain a few things, but I want to ditto the congratulations to everybody that won the certificates for education purposes and the scouts coming in, their Eagle projects moving forward. So I will get that $100 to the front desk so they can come in and pick it up for my contribution. But a side note, a while back, I think you guys remember, we were speaking about George Morris and trying to refund him some money, the tune of about $25,000, and we had directed the town attorney, whatever, to work and to help to get it expedited. So with all the hoops he was given to jump through and everything else, he's gotten all of them jumped through except one final one he needs to get done. The corporation that it was all related to and affiliated with had defunct or closed or whatever, but anyhow, he's in the mode, and I already sent the letter and contacted Tallahassee, to get that reactivated because the reimbursement check needs to be made to the corporation that he initiated from so we don't have any gray area or any issues. So I'm here to ask you all if we can direct Andy, at which time, and he clears it with Keith, 'cause Keith's well aware of this, that once they get that last document they need and a release that Keith wants him to sign related to the corporation, that we won't have any exposure for refunding the money, to direct the administrator to go ahead and get that expedited. So I'd like you guys' support when that last thing gets done to, I guess, allow that to get moving and happening because this has been dragging on for a very, very long time. So that's first and foremost, I wish you guys would support me and help direct Andy to get that done. And if you guys have any questions or whatever, George is here and will gladly answer any questions you guys might have related to that. The other thing is, I don't know how any of us could miss, but the, the work that our landscape company, Luke's, is doing is extremely, extremely poor. And it's been dragging on for quite some time. And I realize also that if we put it back out, it's gonna cost us a lot more money. But it's to the point now that it's an embarrassment. I mean, it's, I mean, I don't know what to tell you. So I've asked Andy if he would use whatever tools of enforcement he has to make them do it, whether it's go out and get somebody else to do it and backcharge them, or whatever, whatever's in the contract that we can do to start taking that action. I think in the past, prior to Andy's getting here, we used that as a threat and never followed through. So I would say that I would like us as a council to not only enforce the contract to the letter of what it is, to get a better job, but I also think that we should put it back out on the street. I mean, it takes some time, knowing that it's gonna cost us more money, but fact of the matter is, what we've got now is so, so horrible that, I don't know if you guys have been out to see the butterfly garden, but it doesn't exist. It's weeds.
Can I kick in on that just-
Sure, jump right in, Freddie.
Because I've been working on it a little bit myself. And I really, you know, I've been on the council now, this is my third time, and I didn't know how that contract worked until just recently. Because I was complaining like my street wasn't being cut enough. But he doesn't have a contract to cut my street. He has a contract to cut our street if we tell him to cut our street. So that's where some of the problem is falling back on. Where some of these areas are not being, getting done, it may be we're not putting enough pressure to get them-
Well, I would say you're right, Freddie, in some cases, but I've gotta tell you, the road ponds that were put in when the road was widened on Griffin Road, I happen to live, my street's 130th Avenue and the Hindu Temple's right there, and across the street's one of those ponds. And wow, if you guys drive by there, take a look-see, it's just atrocious, to say the least. I mean, I know equipment breaks down, and I know they have different issues, but the Eagle Scout project that got done in the park right behind CVS Pharmacy for the, until just like a week or 10 days ago, that, you couldn't see the bench the guy installed that was so buried in weeds. I mean, it was, it was unbelievable, so-
Don't get me wrong, Doug, I'm not supporting this contract 'cause I'm on him too to get a new contract, but what I'm saying is, I-
Some of them are by request.
I was in the impression that my street, if I looked at my contract, it shows my contract, my 166 would be cut sometimes once a month, sometimes twice a month. But that wasn't happening, and I was complaining. But I come to find out, we weren't paying them because, I thought we was paying them, but we're not paying them unless we go out and tell them to do that.
We have a certain area that's part of the contract to cut, and there's so many cuts. And December's done an excellent job on what her ability is related to those cuts and juggling those cuts as far as wintertime, summertime, cutting back in the wintertime to use more in the summertime. So it's so many cuts. And she's been a great, she's, on her end and in her position, I would say she's done an excellent job. To the fault is that we haven't forced the issue on the contract, and I realize that December's probably, she's also a resident, so she's been concerned about cost and issues like that. So when you're a resident and you work here, you say, gosh, you know, I'd really like to force that, but it's gonna cost the town more money, and that means each and every one of us, it's gonna cost more money. So on that note, I would say, you know, you know, it's-
But what I'm saying, Doug, if you look at the contract, and if you look at them, other people were bidding $300,000. He comes up with $185,000, I think it was that, I'm just, but if we, it's our fault. 'Cause we're only giving her $185,000 to cut. She can't cut the town for 185, so she's trying to cut only what has to be cut. And that's where the problems come in, is something we gotta look at ourself and see something. It's just, it's just the way the contract reads-
Well, then I would, I would say this, and I think you'll be in agreement. Andy, why don't you get us each and every one of us a copy of that particular contracts of Luke's? And let us look at it and see what our thought is, and come back to you with it. Because I've gotta tell you, I've, I've not only looked at it, and I've read it a couple of times, but just certain sections, and I've gone over it with December, not recently, but a year and a half or two years ago. And, you know, she was a little reluctant because she didn't wanna lose them, and, you know, it's, you know, she was enforcing where she could, and she's got a relationship with them, so she knows what she can get by with and what she can do. But, you know, I don't know if they're understaffed, undermanned, or whatever the case may be, but we're not getting what our contract says we're supposed to be getting.
You know what that is? I asked Andy for this yesterday. This is our, what we paid Luke from last October to now.
In the mic, Freddie.
I said, this is, Andy got, I mean, Andy did do it, Pete did it for me. I just got it tonight, and I will be looking at it because I'm concerned. You know, what we're paying, why we're paying, and stuff, you know? And I think, I think what it is, I think we all need to look at it a little closer. It's coming up, and I don't think the guy's doing a good job. I don't know if it's our fault, his fault, or somebody. We're not getting the best for our book. I'll tell you that right now. That's the reason I'm looking at it.
Well, you know, I agree with that, but I want everybody to realize, and I clearly know upfront, it's gonna cost us a lot more money to do it right. But, so I don't wanna pull any punches or pretend that's not gonna be the case because when we put it out there, it comes back, it's gonna cost a lot more money. So I don't wanna say, hey, I'm for spending more money, but I'm for, I'm for first enforcing what we have to see what we end up with, if that will work and we're satisfied. And if we can't get that enforced and it doesn't work, we need to put it out and be willing to step up to the plate and take that action required because-
Well, Doug, I think the first thing, and this is what, my opinion-
Go ahead.
And I've talked to Andy about it. I think we need to hire a company to go out there and tell us exactly what needs to be cut and when it needs to be cut. It's never been done in this town because, let me tell you something, I was here in 2000 when I tried to get John Canada to do it. It was never done right.
Yeah, I don't think we need to spend money on a study related to that, but-
Well, sometimes, Doug-
I think we have December, and she's been over this town from one square inch to the other square inch, and I think December and her position, what she does, can probably tell us better and more accurately what we need and where we need it and how frequent we need it than hiring somebody and spend money to let them tell us what we need. When we have a staff person that's probably way more qualified to tell us. So anyhow, so on that note, the other thing I wanna mention is that the, the barn, any update on the barn, Andy? Are you gonna tell me when we come or whatever? But I'd like to, I know we've got some other monies that came in related to the fuel tanks and stuff from Lowe's, and I know we have the refinancing, we'll have that money here pretty soon or whatever. I would tell you, first and foremost, I'd like to get that, if it's not still on the top of the list, back on the top of the list and let us all get rocking and rolling and get that done ASAP, or at least underway and in progressive, moving forward mode. Along with the Fishing Hole Park for the trail side or whatever. I mean, I don't know if we're gonna need any releases to ride there or something because of the situation, but, you know, I'm in favor of getting that open and letting the trail riders go out and ride it, provided it's safe enough and we don't have any liabilities out there that are gonna come back and bite us. So whether we have to section something off with that orange roping stuff or whatever, whatever's required in that avenue. I guess I'm good.
All right.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Mayor, do you have some comments?
Steve, I defer to Andy, the town administrator. Andy, I and Keith attended a meeting last week with several municipalities, and as part of an expiring contract on July the 6th, the Resource Recovery Board in Broward County in trying to distribute some of the assets, applying a value to assets as well as some of the cash that they had on hand is something that potentially is part of a, part of a dispute. And, you know, depending upon what we decide to, I know other municipalities are in the very near future, I mean, I've already done it, that are going to be a part of this, I call it a class action because many municipalities are involved in it, essentially suing the county that the estimates of the inventory and what they're doing with the excess cash is hopefully inadequate and underestimated. So, well, they're in the process of suing the county to ensure that they get this reconciled. But I'll let Andy touch on that. He's agreed to do that as part of the administrator's comment. Other than that, I have no other comments.
All right, great, thank you. I have a couple of comments. The, I did want to thank the Ken, yourself, and the entire board for the work that was done on the Charlie Lynn bench. I think it came out fantastic, looks great, and just a great addition for someone that gave a lot to our town. So appreciate, appreciate all, all the work that went into that. Looks, looks fantastic. Couple other comments. I did want to make comment about the Fishing Hole Park. I absolutely agree, let's get that, we were talking about having it open in 2014 sometime, and I think we twisted arms to get it open by the end of this year, and I think maybe if we twist some arms, we can get it open even sooner than that, as Kathy was saying, just for the trail riders section of it. It would be great to see that thing open and being used and finally having some enjoyment from that. So I don't know, I don't know if that's how that fits in, I don't know all the pieces. I know that you all are into it a little bit deeper, and, but if we can work out a way, and I hope we can, the sooner the better on that. It'd be great to have people using it. And the last thing I wanted to mention, it's not, it's not great news, but it's news that we all need to be aware of, is that historically, since we've been a town, we have, for our flood insurance, we have fallen under Broward County and they're rating for our location. Okay, well, I believe it was, I'm forgetting what the event was that kicked this off, but at any rate, we are now standing alone as a town and being rated alone as a town. And because of that, our rates are going to go up significantly because we have never, as a town, gone out there for our own certification because we've always been under Broward County. And I don't think we received any warning that this was gonna be coming along. So this is going to affect our rates for flood insurance in the town, but I've already talked to Andy, and Andy is already working with his staff to begin the process to have our town certified. I'm hopeful that when we are certified, we will get back to where we were because many of our neighboring towns have the same certification level that Broward County has. So it's, I'm very hopeful that once we get this certification, we will be back to the level that we are, have been historically. But I did wanna bring that up so that the residents were aware that this is going on, we're not surprised by it. Frankly, I think as a town, and I'll let Andy, I'll let you comment on this, I certainly had not heard about it, and I think as a town, we had not been notified that this was coming along at all, so, which is disappointing. It would've been nice if, if they hadn't let us, given us a couple of years' notice so that we could get the certification in place ahead of time. But it is a very involved process getting certified, but our administration, Willie, they're all over it, so they're working on it. But I'll let you follow up on that. And that was all I have. Okay, so with that said, administrative, legal comments, I'm sorry, legal comments.
That's okay, I don't have any. No comments from legal unless there's any questions.
Okay, good. Any questions?
It's summer, legal land is a little quiet.
Good, we like, we like it when legal's a little quiet. All right, administrative comments.
I would love to be as brief, that won't be the case.
We understand.
I do have-
You're holding up your own vacation, you know?
Yeah. I'll just remind you, from the point where you're banging the gavel down tonight, I'm on vacation, and now I'm, yeah, I am gonna prolong my own workday. Just a couple, a couple of easy things and some more complicated issues as well. There was some discussion on 164th Terrace and traffic issue. I personally spoke to Mr. Altshuler, I know Sandy in my office has spoken to some other residents out there. The chief has been hugely responsive and has been out there herself on numerous occasions. I know they've run some traffic operations out there, but as she said, that's temporary. There's a presence while it's there, but they go away and it's gone. The chief has made some professional recommendations as far as stop signs from a, from a safety issue. She talked about the school buses, not so much traffic calming, but overall safety. We're certainly aware of that, and I've directed staff to reach out to Broward County and start to feel the county out with that. You know, Joel, I know you stayed, I wish I could tell you what the timeframe is on that. Unfortunately, I can't, but it is certainly something that's on our radar, it's something that we're gonna, we're gonna keep an eye on and move as quickly as we can with that as best we can 'cause we certainly recognize it as a safety issue in the community. The barn. You know, when you look at a duck floating on a pond, it looks very calm and very serene, and that's kind of, the barn is sitting there. But underneath the surface, the staff is paddling furiously. So we are, we are working very hard on this. I know Emily, Willie, and December have been working on this and putting the scope together so that we can get that out to bid. We are certainly as anxious as you are and as anxious as the residents are to get that project completed. You don't see anything now, you know, Fishing Hole Park was kinda quiet for a while, and all of a sudden, earth was moving, and we had, we had presentations and we're ordering, you know, the playground and some other things. I think the barn is probably in a similar stage right now. We're paddling furiously beneath the surface, and you'll see the evidence of that very shortly. But we are working on it, it is very much a high priority for us. On a sad note, I do wanna let you know that tomorrow was Sergeant Kevin Swanson's last day here in Southwest Ranches. I know Kevin's been here for a long time, I know he's very well thought of in the community, but he is, obviously currently sergeant with, with BSO. He took the exam to be promoted for lieutenant, he is on the promotion list, and for the benefit- And, uh, for the benefit of his own career, uh, BSO would like to move him out of here and observe him in some other places and some other circumstances. So, uh, you know, while we certainly hope to see him again in the future, uh, we wish him all the best. And I just wanted to share that with you tonight. I know we talked last, last, uh, at the last council meeting about Marty's find with the, uh, the utility tax on the propane sales over at Lowe's. I'm pleased to let you know that we have received fifty-five thousand dollars from Lowe's.
Very nice.
So, that was Marty doing a good job looking under every stone.
Very good.
Thank you. I'd also like to acknowledge, uh-
Do I give you the floor?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
No, I, I, Marty, I know, I, I was going to do that as well. I mean, I, code compliance, Robert Soler has been hugely helpful with Marty on that, on that standpoint. And I, I didn't mean to cut you off, Marty, but, uh, Robert's done a great job. We, we anticipate that's going to bring in probably going forward about twelve, twelve to fifteen thousand dollars over the course of a year. Now, it's nice that we have that money. I'll tell you, don't spend it, because some of our other revenues are down and we're going to need that as, as an offset in some cases. Uh, but it's nice that when, you know, when the revenue doesn't come in on one side, when you're able to find some other things to offset that. So, certainly kudos to, uh, to Marty and Robert on that one. I do have an update for you on the computer, the IT conversion and the, uh, the voice over internet. We have a date.
Go ahead.
The computers will be here on Friday, July twelfth. Uh, they're going to shut us down probably about four or five o'clock. They will install the system going into Friday evening. They'll be back on Saturday to troubleshoot and, uh, and Sunday. And so, we'll, we'll go live first thing Monday morning. We should be in very good shape, so we're looking forward to that. Uh, the phones, the voice over internet will follow the following week, will be installed on the nineteenth. And again, we're going to do those at the end of the day or over the weekend, which is, uh, certainly nice, uh, on our new partner there to, to minimize our downtime. So, I just wanted to give you an update on that. Uh, the mayor touched on, and I'm going to spend a little bit more time on that, is the, the assets of the, the Resource Recovery Board. And, and I had talked about that, I think, at the last meeting, uh, last Wednesday. Uh, the mayor and I, along with Keith, attended a meeting in Weston. Uh, they, they invited the mayors, the managers and the attorneys for all the twenty-six participants in the inter-local agreement with Broward County to talk about the, the resources. And I've got two different handouts for you. I'm going to pass this down. This is what I talked about last, uh, last time. Give some, uh, breakdowns on the funds that would be available to us. And, and this was based on tonnage, uh, for two thousand and twelve. So, we thought that we were in line based on this. And we got some bad news this afternoon, so I'm going to, I'm going to continue the story and update you on that in a moment. It was our expectation that we were in line for two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. The meeting that we attended last Wednesday over at Weston, Sunrise, Weston, a few other municipalities, there's a list attached on what I have there for you, are filing suit against Broward County, disputing the, uh, Broward County's accounting of the assets. There's about, I think about twenty-five million dollars that they're saying, these are the assets of the Resource Recovery Board. That's coming to an end. Those assets will be split proportionally among the members. And so, we're, uh, just slightly under one percent based on the list that you have there. Uh, that's what we'd be in tune for. There, there are others and Fort Lauderdale has done an audit, uh, who take exception to the accounting being done by Broward County. There are several assets, landfills, incinerators, things like that, that are, that are titled in the county's name, but are actually assets of the Resource Recovery Board and, and should be, um, part of that pie that's split up among the, uh, the members. So, the, the meeting we attended last week was that, uh, you know, Sunrise started this, Weston jumped in, going to file suit against the county to do, uh, I'll say, a better accounting of those assets and a better split. Uh, they believe that twenty-five million could be fifty million or even a hundred million potentially. And so, uh, you know, our share would, would certainly go up proportionally. And what they were asking last week was for the, the cities and the towns to join in that lawsuit. So, I didn't bring it to you as a discussion item to do that. There are some others that have done that, some other municipalities who have done that last week and again this week. The discussion when we were there last week was that the cost of that lawsuit would be-